I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Camarillo on Tuesday, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Secretary, could you do a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Vander Mullen.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Edsall.
Here.
Vice Chairman Espinoza.
Here.
And Chairman Talmage.
Here. Okay, next we have the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Murphy has been asked to lead us in the pledge.
And that is an.
Hand over your heart and say the pledge.
Yes, if everyone can put their hands over their hearts and ready, begin.
I.
Pledge of Allegiance to the.
Of the United.
States.
America.
And to the.
Republic. For which it stands.
And. One nation. Under God.
God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next agenda item is item four, minutes from the previous meeting, our meeting of March second, two thousand and twenty-one. Are there any comments from the commissioners on the minutes?
Do approve. A second there.
So we have motion and second. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye, aye.
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 Any oppose?
Chair.
Technically, do you want a roll call on this since?
Yes, technically, this is run into teleconference.
Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Yeah.
Mr. Secretary.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Edsall.
Yes.
Commissioner Vander Mullen.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Espinoza.
But yes.
Chairman Talmage.
Yes. Okay, the minutes for the previous meeting have been approved unanimously. Item five, public comments. And this is the time and this is the place for members of the public to address the commission on any matter not appearing on this agenda. Do we have anyone in the audience that desires to speak?
Chair Talmage, I see no attendees, so we can move on to the next agenda item.
All right, that finishes agenda item five. Agenda item six, a public hearing. And this is a zoning ordinance amendment and restatement to the Camarillo Municipal Code, Chapter nineteen point twelve, rural exclusive zone. Do we have a report from staff?
Yes, I'll provide a verbal presentation of the agenda report. Thank you Chairman Talmage. So we are proposing a zoning ordinance amendment essentially to add the word residential in the title of the rural exclusive zone so that it would thereby be known as the rural exclusive residential zone. This proposed text amendment involves non substantive textual clarifications and restates of justice law with some clarifications and therefore it will be exempt from the required environmental analysis under CEQA. So with the amendment to include the word residential in the zone, it's based on some recent history. So in January of this year, the Ventura County Board of Supervisors adopted an industrial hemp cultivation ordinance. And it establishes a half a mile buffer around areas within Ventura County Agricultural Commission's determination of sensitive sites. So anything that is residentially zoned is considered a sensitive site. And for the purposes of the existing RE zone, since it's not clarified to be a residential zone by title, that would not necessarily qualify for that buffer. So we have considered that and staff presented this recommendation to do a zoning ordinance amendment on January twenty-second of this year to the city's Economic Development and Land Use Policy Committee. And the committee agreed with staff's recommendation that staff should bring this item to the city council for consideration for their recommendation to potentially initiate this zoning ordinance text amendment. So on February tenth, staff presented this recommendation to the city council that we should initiate a zoning ordinance text amendment to include the word residential within the rural exclusive residential zone so that it would then qualify as a sensitive site. And then would therefore be afforded that buffer from any potential industrial hemp grows outside of the city within the unincorporated Ventura County area. So staff has done their homework and prepared the draft ordinance, which tonight is going to be presented with the recommendation to the planning commission in the form of a resolution that would recommend to the city council the text changes in the zoning ordinance amendments so that we would end up with a rural exclusive residential zone. And we also made some other small non substantive clarifications with some rewording to make it more contemporary with more plain language, plain English language. So with that, staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution that recommends approval to the city council of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment in the Camarillo Municipal Code, Chapter nineteen point twelve, rural exclusive, to be the rural exclusive residential zone. This is a advertised public hearing. So after staff's presentation, I'll address any questions the commission may have and then we would need to open the public hearing and then close up before taking action. So I would also like to thank the assistance that was provided by our deputy city attorney Kane Toon, who was very helpful along with Monique Martinez or admin staff that supported putting this information together for the commission. That concludes the presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission? Do any commissioners have a question? Mr. Commissioner Edsall?
I have one. I know the the good intended result is we get to increase the hemp growing buffer zone. But is there any negative unintended result, you know, when you add the word residential in there? I mean, could someone build a tract home now on on a previously rural exclusive property? It's what?
The zoning was already established to be large lot residential, just more rural in character so that it could also accommodate on larger residential lots, some forms of animal keeping and husbandry. So no, we don't anticipate any unintended consequences. Should that occur in the future, we always have the ability to come back and do further amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good question.
Are there any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Vander Mullen.
Looking at the map, it looks like the majority of that area now, especially on the east side of Camarillo, is already residential and around Spanish Hills and Sterling Hills. And looking at the description on the first page where we start out A is agricultural usage and B is one family residential. Could we consider swapping those? So we put residential first with agriculture second, if we want to put the emphasis on the residential.
So in the zoning map, the area in Spanish Hills and all the areas surrounding it in the dark green are rural exclusive right now.
Right.
And so our goal is to change that to rural exclusive residential.
Right, but I'm no, just the descriptions, use is permitted on the first page under nineteen twelve zero two zero.
Oh.
You have A and then B. I was just wondering if to put the emphasis on the residential and since we're putting adding it to the title, swap those two possibly.
You know what? We could swivel swap out all of this and kind of put it all in different order. Typically, what we do if this was a new ordinance is we put it in alphabetical order just because it's easier to read. Because technically, there's hierarchy of any of the different uses. So a daycare is permitted just at equal level of a single family home, which is equal to agriculture. There's no hierarchy of uses. So because agriculture is listed first doesn't mean that that's the primary use that's allowed. All those permitting allowed with the same weight. That's a good question. But yeah, we didn't want to fill out the ordinance too much. We just want to try to keep it very simple and straightforward to address the purpose, which is to clarify that it's residential and then potentially be a sensitive site. So yes, if this was a brand new ordinance, we would try to alphabetize that so that it's easier for the reader and user.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the commission? Commissioner Murphy.
Yes, thank you. So if if this passes, if the ordinance changes, will the city then go back to the county and and ask them to redraw their their buffer map?
Yes. That's that's our intended purpose for this, correct?
Good idea.
Now, there may be permits that have been issued. We don't know because we haven't gotten an answer from the act commissioner yet on what industrial hemp permits have been issued where. But we're doing our best to get this effectuated so that we can be proactive to try to avoid any potential issues.
Absolutely, and I hope that the county would be receptive to to that because it's probably right around this time that that they're starting to plant the seed or whatever. So.
Right.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Vice Chair Espinoza.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to know if they had had a permit request to plant hemp before we actually did this adoption, what would have taken place in that event? Because it seems to me like the evidence is there to demonstrate clearly that in the rural exclusive zone, there has been residential and is housing. Uh, so it didn't seem like that should have been a really up for debate.
I know. I'm with you on that one, but it it was determined that it wasn't considered residential based on the zoning ordinance amendment that we're presenting to correct that. So we agree. However, if there have been permits issued, they could potentially be grandfathered in before this ordinance gets effectuated if that does get planted based on a legitimate permit. As we speak, we're hopeful that that's not the case. Assuming that the planning commission adheres to staff's recommendation this evening and forwards this to the city council, we anticipate taking this to the city council at their first meeting in April. And we're hopeful at that point then that this gets adopted with the thirty days and then that would preclude any issues within the community. We've heard anecdotally that there are no permits being sought adjacent to the leisure village area and the RE zoning over at the east perimeter of the city off of Santa Rosa Road. But that's anecdotal. We don't know the the full extent as to whether or not that's the truth at this point.
Okay, the other question I had was on the zoning map, it shows a rural exclusive over an area close to where I'm at, which is the Rancho Adolfo Estates near the Caiagus Creek. Now, I thought those were individual parcels, so I was wondering what the what the size, it seems like ten thousand square feet was a size limitation or minimum size, but are those properly within that or is there a description for that?
So there's only all various sizes. And oftentimes there's a number following abbreviation that denotes what the acreage size is. So for example, the St. John Seminary site is the remainder that's not developed is RE five acres, so that would be the minimum lot size. Then west of the new St. John Seminary Residential Development is RE thirty, which those minimum lot size would be thirty thousand square feet average. So it depends on where exactly you're looking. But I would have to look at that with you separately. We could do that offline because it may not necessarily impact the decision before the commission this evening, but you could send me that question. I'll look at that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have the zoning map right here in front of me though, so if you want to tell me exactly where it is, I can find it.
Yeah. Uh, off of Adolfo Road, it's that area near Caiagus Creek, just north.
Oh, I see it. It's adjacent to Caiagus Creek.
Yeah.
RE, it says RE one acre.
Those are uh, like mobile, that's a like a mobile home, little golf course there. And but they're, I think they're individually owned and they own the land. In fact, I think they're individual parcels.
Yeah, we're looking at the same spot. I believe it's just right after the bridge.
Oh, yeah.
It does say RE one acre, but the mobile home park may have been done at a separate plan development permit with separate lot size on that. I'd have to look at the permit history on that particular development.
And if I might add, I think that also applies to the mobile home area around Camarillo Springs Golf Course, which is in the RE zone.
That's correct. Yeah, so I believe mobile home parks are allowed with a conditional use permit.
Right. They are listed.
So that's how that would have happened is that they would have been separately permitted through a conditional use permit. We'd have to check the permit history on that, Commissioner Espinoza.
Okay.
And then Commissioner Vander Mullen, you're correct, the same as the condition of Camarillo Springs with their mobile home park was the same zoning that's done the same way through conditional use permit.
Yes.
Are there any other questions from the commission?
Don't have.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Espinoza.
Okay, I I had just a couple of comments. I was also concerned about the potential of creeping incrementalism if we were going to have some particular issue where someone would come in with a new development. But under the existing RE, it's rural exclusive, they there could have been residential constructed in that under the existing. And what we're doing is we're inserting the word residential so that it's really clear that it can be. And there are numerous various rules or variances depending on the kind of property where it is and how much acreage could be developed, either as a single home or or otherwise.
Yes.
Really, the emphasis is adding the word housing or residential to the rural. So.
Yes, that's correct.
There before, it's just we're reinforcing the idea that it could be a form of residential and therefore be excluded from consideration by other industrial uses in the buffer zone outside the city.
Yes, that's a hundred percent correct. And quite honestly, if you were to refer to the big page seventeen, which is the underlying strikeout version of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment.
Right.
The existing language and the intended purpose is not changing really at all. And it does say that it was intended to promote and preserve large lot subdivisions, what you're capable of producing and supporting certain ancillary agricultural uses and the keeping of certain domestic animals for personal purposes. So really, this highlights that it was intended for large lot subdivisions, which are intended for residential use as a component of those lots. So we haven't changed the intent. We haven't changed the purpose. We're just clarifying that by adding the word residential.
Are there any other questions or comments from the commission? With that, I would like to open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open on this matter. Do we have anyone in the public that cares to comment? Do we have any letters? Is there anyone in the audience?
There is no one in the audience. We do not have any attendees, so I don't believe there are any public comments.
Okay, then I'll consider the public hearing closed. That was a knock of the gavel on the wood block and I think we also have a report from our ordinance subcommittee on this particular matter.
We didn't have, we didn't have it taken to the planning commission ordinance committee because it was so straightforward.
Okay.
To try to.
I just saw that it was on the agenda, so, okay.
Let's try to expedite this. Yeah, we moved it on. We talked last week about having a peacock this evening at the last meeting. However, the items that we anticipated aren't fully prepared at this point.
Is there any, then is there any discussion by the commission on the matter at hand? Commissioner Edsall.
I think this is pretty straightforward and pretty clear, so I'm I'm in favor of it when we get ready to call for resolution.
Commissioner Vander Mullen, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just, just kind of a clarification back on the questions of the use and the lot sizes. When you get to nineteen twelve zero five zero lot area and dimensions, it does spell out that they must be ten thousand square feet unless a greater area is designated by a sub subzone suffered. I mean, I kind of, unless there's, to me, the way I read it, that unless there's a conditional use on it allowed to it, you're not going to have the small houses or small developments. So I just wanted to, to me, I see that as a clarification of what can be built or how, you know, the lots can be used. Because most of the housing that's there is all custom homes for the most part.
Right, that's very helpful. Thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
Yeah, sure, I just wanted to ask for the commission that this item today is is a recommendation on this ordinance. And just if there's any, and a lot of the changes are really non substantive clarification, things that don't change the existing nature of ordinance. So we have this draft version here, but yeah, as you mentioned earlier that, you know, there may be a typo here and there, and if there's any non substantive change, that doesn't need to come back for planning commission for your review. Your review is really recommendation on this ordinance and and any changes that's presented, but if there's any typos, you know, grammatical mistakes, things of that nature, that does not need to come back to commission.
All right, thank you for the clarification. With all that said, are there any other comments by the commission? The chair would entertain a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Um.
So. So move.
Who said that? Oh.
Please.
I think Commissioner Edsall.
They've actually started it.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Vice Chair Espinoza, did you move? Did you make the motion?
I'm not, I either made the motion here or I'm seconding Commissioner Edsall's.
Oh, all right, okay. All right. Okay, any any further discussion by by the commission? With that, I'd like to call for a vote. Can we do a roll call vote? Commissioner Murphy?
We need a read of the.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need to have a reading of the resolution. I'm sorry, my mistake.
Thank you. I'll read the title. Resolution number PC two thousand and twenty-one dash five. A resolution of the planning commission of the City of Camarillo recommending approval to the city council of an ordinance amending and restating Camarillo Municipal Code, Chapter nineteen point one two, rural exclusive residential zone.
I'll make a motion to wait for the reading and vote for adoption.
Second.
There is a motion and seconded to wait for the reading and move for adoption. All right, now we do the roll call vote. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vander Mullen?
Yes.
Commissioner Edsall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Espinoza?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the motion carries to pass the resolution five oh. That concludes that item on our agenda.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And we move on to item seven on the agenda, Director's Report. Do we have a Director's Report tonight?
Yes, thank you Chairman Talmage. So we anticipate having a special meeting with the planning commission that will be joint with the city council on April fourteenth. We anticipate this will be in the five o'clock session. So if you guys could please make yourselves available for that, we will be presenting an update on the status of the housing element and how we've been making some progress on putting that together through obtaining public input and preparing draft calls and policies. So that'll be a joint meeting with the city council and we will post that, make sure that you all are available to attend as planning commissioners. So that's on April fourteen. And we anticipate again that'll be at five o'clock. And we do, excuse me.
Is that in place of a meeting in early April or are we?
We, we have a schedule for a meeting on April sixth. However, at this point, the items may not be ready at that point, so we anticipate that meeting may be canceled, but we're not canceling it yet.
Okay.
It's just that we we're not doing a special meeting in place of anything. That's just that's
Right.
The council needs and we want to have you participate and have a special planning commission meeting that night.
Right.
Then we do anticipate a meeting on April twentieth. And we anticipate a conditional use permit for Rite Aid as being relocated next to Sprouts. And then Ross is going to be moving into where the former Rite Aid is within that shopping center. So we're going to be getting a new Ross up there on Los Poses and Arneal, so that'll be nice. And then we're hopeful, we don't know for sure, but we're hopeful that we'll have the residential plan development permit for the Ran Rancho project, which was the general plan amendment on the western perimeter of the Springville specific plan. Dennis Hardgrave is the applicant, so that's a hundred and fifty-eight detached homes along with the park and then the preservation of the Shooly House. So we're hopeful we'll have that residential plan development permit ready for your consideration that evening. And then the Rexford Industrial Development is expanding along their property at thirty-two, thirty-three Mission Oaks Boulevard. And that's a fairly significant modification. And we're hopeful that we'll be able to present that to the planning commission that evening on April twentieth also. So that concludes the Director's Report at this time. I do want all of the commissioners to know that we anticipate Ventura County will be moving into the red tier with our COVID nineteen regulations, so it should have the effect of relaxing some standards where we may be able to dine in. Grocery stores may be able to accommodate a hundred percent capacity. And there'll be some other updates that should make living a little bit more close to what we had come accustomed to as normal. So we're looking forward to that. So it's gonna be a good day. The luck of the Irish tomorrow is gonna bring us the red tier, not the green tier, but the red tier. So someday we'll be in the green tier. That concludes my report. I want to thank you all again for your volunteerism and participation. The planning commissioners should be doing a great job.
I have one question. Were you going to say anything about the Pheasant Hall Property Management Incorporated letter? The one about the withdrawing on the conditional use permit and that we approved last fall?
No, because we talked to him and he's actually going to be considering looking at the fees with Public Works for grading and improvement plans. And so we're still having discussions with Mr.
Oh, okay, all right. I had, just as a matter of information, had given the planning commission a heads up that I had received a copy of the letter and I didn't know if we were going to talk about it tonight or not. So that's fine. Because I was copied on the letter as I'm sure you saw.
I did.
Right, okay. All right. Um. Are there any commission comments? Before we close the meeting, anyone have any comments they'd like to make?
Uh, no, but I I did wonder with the tier, red tier and things opening up, there certainly has been a nice, a long Ventura Boulevard, some of those restaurants with the seating where it's at. I wouldn't be surprised if some of them want to keep it for. I wouldn't be surprised if some of them want to keep it for a little while longer.
I know. We anticipate having a transition period. So even though restaurants may be able to open at twenty five percent capacity indoors, obviously they're not at full capacity. And some people may not be comfortable dining indoors, so we're definitely going to continue to allow outdoor dining. For a while longer.
Well, I think it's appropriate also to consider that we are entering, first off, we had daylight savings time. And now we're entering nicer weather. We'll see and the outdoor dining may be a very attractive. Benefit for specifically the downtown area, Old Town. To have people outside on the sidewalk in the designated dining areas as well as having them within the restaurant. So I think that's a good idea. Commissioner Vandermeulen?
I was just gonna say, along with the outdoor or with the dining, they've also loosened it or expanded it to three households. And you don't have to have this one household at a table. So I know I'm going to be really busy here because I'm not, you know, deciding what we can open up and how soon and when. Like HOA pools can now open completely, but that's a little risky for us. But it's going to be interesting to see, you know, what all is opened up and expanded, making it easier to shop, more people in the malls. They still want, as far as I know, you know, still be careful with the masks and social distancing. But it is going to be interesting the next few weeks to see how many people get out and where, so looking forward to it.
Yes.
I know. Well, thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission? Well, again. Director Vanka, thank you to you and your staff for a very concise and clear. Ordinance change and I think it was a very beneficial meeting for us all. And it's, it's good to be involved in the front end side of a change in an ordinance, I think. I don't know how much they've been involved before, but if we had the meeting of the ordinance subcommittee. It may have been the first one in anyone can remember, so anyway, but thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, with that, I consider the meeting adjourned. And we'll see you maybe on April sixth, but for sure on April fourteenth. So thank you all very much and be safe out there. Thank you.